All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Antoine is here. Ms. Bonnick?
Here.
Mr. Connor is not with us.
Absent with notice.
With notice. Dr. Demus?
Here.
Ms. Ikorz?
Here.
Ms. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Can we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. And can I make a motion to, or not a motion, a friendly amendment to move board discussion and public comment up after G? And then we'll go into closed session. We do expect to come out and take a vote, though.
No.
No, not on that one? Okay. Sorry, we will not.
We will come out and adjourn.
We will come out and adjourn.
Okay.
Any? So moved. Okay, all right, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Can I hand it over to Dr. Robinson for celebrations?
Maybe. A couple celebrations tonight, busy time of year, but we've picked a few with the help of some of our building leaders. So a few celebrations from Hamilton Parsons Elementary. At the recent watchdog football game, a HamPar student was chosen to be an honorary football captain. And that top picture there, you're seeing a few members of the team. And Coach Lee, I think, went to the school to present that honor with them and gave them a field pass. And they were there at the game, that young man was with his family. Second, his students designed class T-shirts and a winning design was chosen from every grade level for their Fun Run shirts. So kind of a personal touch coming to the Fun Run this year. And then a parent donated their time. That isn't a picture of the high school parking lot on the bottom right there. That's actually Hamilton Parsons. So a parent donated their time to paint a couple of the staff parking spots. And they'll be lucky winners to have priority parking, I think, every month or something like that. So I just appreciate Mrs. Vance-Davern and the work that she's doing to just fully immerse herself. And those pictures of her with kids are representative of any time I've been in the building, kind of where she's at. So we're grateful for that. That's a couple celebrations. Heville Elementary, this month Heville had their annual Basketball Jones kickoff assembly for their We Are One Team School Program. So his comment, "Don't be a superstar, be a superhero", has become the theme for this year. I think they're in their third or fourth year with having this program kind of guide what their school-wide theme is. I would liken the We Are One to, we talk sometimes about leader and me and each of our schools and caring school communities. So for Heville, that's kind of what this kickoff is. And each month, they're going to push out a new challenge and celebrate one boy and one girl from each classroom who will join Mr. Essien for a superhero lunch. So again, I think some things that are kind of drifting across their elementaries with some student-led component of school-wide assemblies and recognizing kids. So they also have a school-wide T-shirt design competition. And this is for the actual heroes. Each month, we'll get those shirts and be able to wear them around proudly. Washington Elementary has been busy. They had their first family fun night on September 8th and had a variety of activities outside that you're seeing some representation of. They've also had their first assembly of the year. And I shared a link to a story with the board last week. So the honorary guest of the first school-wide assembly is Milo, Washington's new therapy dog. And he welcomed kids and they just presented to kids, you know, some good information about what a therapy dog is, what Milo's role is in the school, and how he's different than what their pet at home might be for Washington. But you can imagine he's a big hit and a little bit of a ham, as I understand it, when the camera's around. So we're excited to see that flourish and grow and the impact that Milo can have at Washington. A couple weeks ago, we've, you know, had the 14th Annual Watchdog Campaign for Cancer Awareness. The most prominent piece of this is the watchdog football game on Friday night. That's just one of the greatest, you know, community events that I think happen connected to the school district each year. But the campaign is bigger than that. Some of our other fall sports teams also have watchdog games and they recognize family members in that. So in this case, on that Friday night, our varsity football players and coaches, varsity cheerleaders, and the varsity dance team members got the opportunity to recognize family members and friends who have been affected by cancer. And so, of course, we're super excited that the Bulldogs defeated the Eisenhower. And then that picture on the bottom is kind of the annual afterglow of the game where the band forms the ribbon and those that stick around kind of fill it in. And so just a great, I just, you know, we've talked about how special those Friday nights are in the fall. And I would tell you that this was a capacity and beyond crowd. And it was just, it was just good all the way around. So grateful for all the work that went into that. I know that Coach Rhynus, you know, and a few put a lot of effort into that. And I'm just appreciative of what this means, you know, to our community and how it impacts some of those survivors and family members who have lost loved ones. This past Friday night, we also had kind of an annual rite of passage in the fall, and that was our Fall Kids Dance Clinic. So the bottom-left picture is kind of begin with the end in mind. And this group got the opportunity to perform in pre-game. So you see on the bottom there, 128 of our elementary students. We had kids from each of our five schools. They were actually at the high school earlier in the week, Tuesday or Wednesday night, and they spent a few hours there actually learning the routine. And so this year, it was Party in the USA was the dance. And that was a lot of fun. It was good to see that much participation. And I think our varsity dance girls that help are actually, I think they have the most fun out of all involved. That's my celebrations for tonight. So I'll move on to our presentation. So Kellen Riker is here. He's a senior manager from Yo &amp; Yo. We typically hear from Jessica Rolfe, and she had a family commitment this evening. So Kellen's here on behalf of Yo &amp; Yo. I know our finance committee got a detailed presentation, but we're here tonight for Kellen to update us on the annual audit for not just the board, but also for the community. So thanks for being here, Kellen.
Well, thanks for having me, Todd. Thank you again, everybody, for having me. My name's Kellen Riker from Yo &amp; Yo. I'm the lead auditor here for you. First off, I'd like to start it off by thanking Vicki and her team. They do an amazing job, just like every year. Really makes our job a lot easier when you have someone like that in charge who, you know, gets you things on time, gets everything right, and makes the whole process easier. So I'd like to thank her and her team. So you all have a presentation in front of you and it's on the screen. But kind of go over the details of it, kind of as a summary, but you also have the financial statements in front of you, too. So we have a financial statement audit and we have to give an opinion on that. And this year, you had an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance, saying that basically your financial statements are free from material misstatement. You know, we put a lot into that. There's a lot of work just to have that, but that's the highest level of assurance and it's amazing. One of the big things this year was the adoption of our new standards for SPITAs, for short. But it stands for Subscription-Based Information Technology Agreements. And this year, the difference on there, it's kind of like leases last year, but it increased our right-to-use asset for those subscription-based. It's all of our curriculum. It's basically everything made up. But there's going to be that asset on the books, but also a liability as well. So here is a snapshot of the balance sheet. Like I said, kind of a summary, gives in a little bit more detail on your financial statements. But these are our major funds. They're called major funds because they make up a majority or a big percentage of our financial statements. It's going to be our general fund, and this year, it's our 2022 Facility Bond Fund. And then everything else, your food service fund, your community service fund, student activities, debt and capital projects funds are in that non-major governmental funds column. As you can see, we have a healthy, we have a healthy amount of cash investments. The due from other governmental units, that's going to be all of our accounts receivable for our state aid and our federal grants as well. Liabilities down there is our accounts payable due to other governments. It's everything that we're yet to pay, but is due as of 6:30. And then our accrued salaries payable and expenditures for the summer for our teachers and other staff. You can see that we have the cash and investments in the 2022 Facility Bond. We're still spending those down this year. The next slide will show our expenses for those. Well, it's the fund balance, actually. You can see that the 2022 Facility Bond, it's actually restricted for the bond. You can see on the restriction line. And you'll see in the non-major governmental funds, we also have some restrictions. That's for our food service, our other capital projects funds, and our debt service fund. And committed is for our student activities. You can see that we have a healthy fund balance all around. We have the $12.1 million in unassigned for the general fund. It's a really good fund balance. Kind of go in a little bit more detail about the percentage of that a couple slides later. Next slide here kind of is a snapshot of our revenues and expenditures. I will say compared to last year, our general fund, we have $11 million more in revenues than last year. That's basically made up of an increase in state aid and also in our federal grants. And with that is an increase in our expenses because they go hand-in-hand, about $8 million increase there for the general fund. You'll see that in both the 2022 Facility Bond, that we had expenditures exceeding revenues and also in our non-major governmental funds, and that's from all of our capital projects funds. We get all that money upfront. We make a little bit with investments, but we're spending them on our capital projects. Next slide here goes over our general fund budget. You can see we budgeted conservatively, which all of our boards do across Michigan. With our revenues and expenditures, we want to make sure we're in line with what we're going to get. And we don't want to, you know, make a lot of money there. So you can see there was kind of a big swing between our original and final budget because we knew we were going to get more money and we knew we were going to spend more money. When it came down to it, we added $3.1 million to the fund balance for general fund. And I like visuals, so here's some pie charts. Like I said before, we had a lot of increases in our general fund revenue. You can see our federal revenue made up 7% at $4.7 million. That was an increase of about $1 million from last year. And then our state revenue is $55.8 million, which is increases $7 million from last year. The foundation allowance went up quite a bit from last year. And we had an increase in our pupil count as well. Next slide goes over our general fund expenditures. The big difference here is just our salaries and employee benefits. They increased $7 million. That's where a majority of our increases and expenditures came from. This is our per-pupil analysis of revenues and expenditures. The green line is our revenues and blue line is our expenditures. If you can see the last couple of years, there's that little bit of gap there. That's what we like to see, a little bit of a gap. You know, you want them to stay line or hand-in-hand. And you can see before the pandemic in 2019 and 2020, they're just a little bit closer. So we're still getting those monies in and trying to spend those down, like our federal revenues. Next chart here is our 10-year enrollment analysis. You can see we took a dip. You know, we were taking a dip 19, 20. For the last few years, we've been increasing and increasing. 2022, we had 5,209 as a pupil count. And last year, we have 5,321. So increase of over 100 students. It really helps out with our state revenues. And this is what I was talking about earlier with our general fund fund balance. What MDE likes to do is they like to do a percentage ratio as a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. They recommend having anywhere between 15 and 20% in your general fund balance. You can see in the past, you know, we were a little bit below that at 8%, 13%, 14%. This year, we're at that 17%. And that's right in the range where they recommend. Next slide kind of goes over our facility bond progress. So the 2020 Facility Bond, we're kind of wrapping up with the projects. And we issued the 2022 one this last year. That's why you kind of see that we have a lot more revenues than expenditures, but there's a lot of projects going on here. So next year, we'll see those come up as well. So that kind of the financial statement part of the audit. There's also a single audit, which is our federal revenues. So we kind of dig deep into the federal revenues, federal expenditures, and there's major programs. This year, we had our child nutrition cluster, and then the education stabilization funds is the major programs. So our findings for those, one, our financial statement audits, as I said earlier, we had no findings. Our federal award audit as well, we had no findings. And there's no prior year findings either. The last slide here goes over our governance letter. It's about a six-page letter in the financials. Or it's not in the financial statements, it's a separate letter, but it's communication to governance on required communications, estimates, and kind of our findings in the audit. Like I said earlier, no findings. But one thing earlier I said, two, adoption of new standards. Those are the SPITAs that we had. Basically, we had to take anything that is a subscription-based information technology agreement and record those on the books for their life. We had a lot of curriculum for the subscription-based, so we recorded all of those this year. Upcoming standards, we have GASB 101, which is for compensated absences. Just kind of goes into how that's all calculated, pretty much going to be the exact same, but that's the only new upcoming one next year. And the last part here is recommendations. This is just a recommendation to management. And a lot of schools have this one the last couple of years because of COVID. It's the food service fund balance. We received a lot of federal grants and awards for our food service. And basically, you have to have no more than three months of expenditures as your food service fund balance. When we calculate that out, we actually have more than three months of expenditures in there. So we have this little paragraph in there as MDE wants to see it. They completely understand because every school has this. So they just want to make sure you have a spend-down plan in place, which, talking to Vicki and talking to you guys as well, we definitely have a spend-down plan in place. And that is the end of the audit presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
No question, just comment. I just would like to thank Vicki and Dr. Robinson for the job that they do. Working in the district myself, I know what happens when auditors come into their office and how attentive you have to be and be there for them, get them the information that they need. And also, when we're trying to provide a budget each year, we're always kind of forecasting. We don't really know what our value or what we're going to be getting. So throughout the year, Vicki and Dr. Robinson are presenting us with numbers that aren't really real numbers, but they're best estimates. So it's nice to see where we're landing in the job that they're doing.
Definitely, yes. They did an amazing job and always welcoming for us as well. So it's always nice on our end as well.
Seeing nothing else. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for consent action? Moved by Dr. Demus.
Second.
Support by Ikorz. This includes our general fund bills, financial reports, our wire transfer report, approval of purchasing card expenditures, and the minutes from the regular meeting on August 21st. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Moving down to informational updates and communications, do we have?
Just pushed out to the board today, Antoinette did an invitation to the State of the Community Luncheon that's coming up in October. And just wanted to mention, you know, there's been an expansion to the Greater Romeo, Washington Chamber. Over the course of the last four months, the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce had dissolved. So there's been some concerted efforts, and they're now the North Macomb Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I think the expansion has been exciting, a little bit hectic, if I'm honest, for those folks, you know, real close to the work. But so this, I think, will be a unique opportunity because I'm anticipating we're not just going to have folks from our immediate community, you know, the school district, but also some from across North Macomb. So if you're able, just let Antoinette know. And I think the Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, is the keynote speaker at this year's luncheon amongst, with other community leaders as well. Committee reports, we have, we've had both a facilities and a finance committee. So I'm not sure who wants to go first.
I will do facilities. And I think, Chris, you're going to do finance? So there was a lot of cross-reference, so I'll let finance take the topics that were in both reports. But in facilities, we also, Mr. Storm, talked to us about our extension of a lawn service provider and possibility of an RFP going out on that. We talked about, what is the item that's on our, the equipment purchase that is on our action for tonight? And then we talked briefly about 297 Prospect and just the fact that we do have to circle back on that. We've obviously pivoted from the original contract, but that we need more time as a full board to figure out our next steps in regards to that. And I will let finance do the rest unless anybody has questions on facilities.
Good. So a portion of that was spent, of course, with our auditors who gave a phenomenal presentation and broke it down, pretty much how they did in finance. The property was mentioned, but echoing what our president mentioned. And then the other big thing on the agenda was our bonds. So the first one was the bus bond, completed in May, pretty much. There was about 60,000 left of that. I know we are going to purchase one more bus along with, we had a portion left that we could use with the 2021 bond. So those two buses should be completed or will be completed rather soon. And then the other big one coming up that we will have to discuss as full board is the non-homestead and our millage renewals, which will be coming up here pretty soon. And let's see, sorry, my notes. So yes, the last levy will be in 2024 of next year. So we would potentially look to make that, see which ballots or we can get that on so we're not having to do special. I do know that in November, we will go up to vote for both of those. And both of them do play a heavy part in how we operate as well, especially the sinking fund. It may not include some of those fun visual projects, but sinking fund for this district has done a lot, replacing our roofs, boilers exploding in the winter, frozen pipes, that kind of stuff. So that's quite a bit. And then kind of farther out, we're looking at potentially a bond of 50 million that would be in 2025 that would help with some of the projects in the 2021 bonds that we couldn't or we may not finish, depending on material cost. A lot of things have gone up over the past years. So really seeing what we can do in mitigate, if we can get more done with the 21 and then kind of phase it into the 2025, that would be great. But we really have to continue to monitor pricing of materials and construction. Other than that, did you guys have anything else to add? And then I did want to make one more point, too. With the non-homestead, if it's not voted in or selected to continue with it, we do not get replacement funds from the state on that. It is a foundational allowance, so that is something we really do need to discuss as well and hopefully get approved. But quite a few bonds, but a lot of great things have been done. And a, you know, huge congratulations to our residents that vote on these. That's why you see the new buildings, the new buses. You help keep our tech updated anytime we need it, help with those emergency, like I said, broken pipes. You never know what's going to happen in these buildings. So these bonds are very important to the district. Thank you.
Couple upcoming meetings in October. We have a safety committee meeting a week from today. And just wanted to note that we've made the decision to meet in person at the high school in the main conference room at 5:00 PM. So we'll get an agenda out later this week for that. And then we have a facilities subcommittee meeting scheduled for October 16th. And that will be looking at the items that we'd be bringing at the regular meeting in October for approval. We have a pretty important construction meeting tomorrow to kind of determine. It looks like more of the projects are actually going to end up coming in November, but we think we'll have a couple that will probably hit the finish line to be reviewed by the facilities committee and then presented at the October regular meeting, which I think is the 23rd. So we have an annual rite of passage that brings great joy from the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services. And we're here to update on our return to continuity of services plan.
Thank you.
Mrs. McFarland, rescue me.
No problem, Doc. So this is the third time, I think, I've been in front of you every six months. Because we are accepting the American Rescue Plan SIR III funds, we have to review our return to learning continuity of services plan with you. And it's not greater than every six months. So last time we reviewed it was in March, so this is six months. And we'll have one more go-around because the funds exhaust in September 30th of 2024. So maybe I'll throw August at you. So in this plan, it addresses recommended prevention and mitigation strategies for a variety of places within the school and activities within the school, and then the instructional format. We did make one change. In the plan that was reviewed in March, we had testing will not be required, but may be offered to families because at that point, we did have tests that we could get from the health department that we could give to families if they wanted testing for COVID-19. We changed that because we don't have tests that if they're interested, we would refer them to Macomb County Health Department if and when any home test may become available to the district. I haven't seen that yet, but we could make those available to families. Thank you. We continue to offer all in person. We do have RVA as an option, but it's not necessarily for kids to come and go. You are committed to that because it is there. It is, the content is not directly correlated and aligned to what's happening in the classroom. And then currently, no mandates from the county health department. So I believe you got a memo earlier this month with the continuity of learning plan that Dr. Robinson shared with you. So if there are any questions from the board, I would be happy to address some now. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll stay up at the mic.
Mr. Murray, you want to join?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So I'll begin my report with hearing from academic services.
So NWEA testing started last week, and many students were able to finish. This week, we're finishing some students that may have
This week, we're finishing some students that may have been absent or needed it a little longer during their testing sessions. So we'll be finished by Friday this week. So teachers and reading specialists and interventionists will have that data for their use quicker than we did last year. So I can't remember what month the board approved it, but we did change our teacher observation evaluation system from the Marzano Focus Model to the 5D model out of the University of Washington. So so far administrators and two of our teachers have been through five of the six days of training. So on Wednesday this week, September 27th, it is a full day professional development day, no school for our students, but our adults will all be learning. And the teachers will be learning about the 5D rubrics and the growth plan. This really is a strong instructional framework built around growth for teachers. So we're excited about that. I, Mr. Martz, our middle school team, have been heavily involved in the transformation work to align to the academies at Romeo High School. So the staff met for two days in August. We met again with a smaller team earlier this month after school for a couple hours. And we'll meet again in the morning, on the morning of October 5th. So community members joined us for a little bit in August. So we had some parents, some community-based and nonprofit organizations, and we heard from some students in one of the days in August. So October will bring a little bit of a smaller group, about 12 staff members, more community members. We've been trying to rally the troops. And we've got a few more organizations that are going to be joining us, and we'll actually start the master planning process. So we have a half day in October and a half day in November. And our goal is to get this done so we can present a master plan for the middle school to the board at the second meeting in January. I'll let Mr. Murray take the next two.
Thank you. All right, from elementary perspective, our CKLA launch, our new ELA curriculum is in full swing, and our teachers are rocking it. I've had the opportunity to visit several classrooms and see CKLA in action. Dr. Robinson, if you'd actually moved the slideshow forward one slide. I snuck a picture in here that came across my Twitter feed shortly before I came here. That's Brianna Lorraine, who is a first grade teacher at Amanda Moore. The second knowledge unit that first graders learn is about the human body. So you can see that she's really taking it seriously and playing the part, right? So yeah, that's evidence that our teachers are, you know, taking this in and doing a fantastic job so far.
Organs on the outside?
Yes. So I'll have to find out where she got that. That may be something everybody needs. I don't know.
It's a costume for you.
Yeah. Oh, really? Yeah. Yes, thanks. Okay, so along with our CKLA launch, besides professional development, we've tried to provide some space and opportunity for teachers to collaborate, knowing that there's not time necessarily to meet on a daily basis, and email gets cumbersome. We've set up Google Spaces for all of our teachers at every grade level. So for example, first grade teachers can enter into a chat with each other simply by, you know, basically typing in what's akin to a text message within their Google Space. It allows teachers to bounce ideas off each other, look for support, allows me to stay connected with what's going on and try to troubleshoot issues that happen before they become something that causes a lot of frustration. And so it's been highly successful so far. You know, lots of chatter, you know, all good chatter and supportive and looking for guidance through it as we worked on pace. And just really the overall, like implementing a new program. I said it's like turning a cruise ship 180 degrees based on where we came from. So overall, it's going really well, but we want teachers to have the ability to learn from who they learned best from, which is each other. And then we also have the opportunity, we're fortunate enough to work with Amplify on a no-cost pilot at Washington Elementary School and Amanda Moore for their M-Class diagnostic tool. Essentially, what happens is our NWEA screener will flag students that are in need of greater support. These students will take an M-Class diagnostics, which is driven by Dibbles, and then a tailor-made professional, or not professional development plan, intervention plan. I guess a professional development. Intervention plan will be created for them. It's not all just on the computer, right? It's actually working with our interventionists, so it's kind of a combo. And then, you know, after a certain period of time, we'll progress monitor and then, you know, kind of decide where the student's at, whether or not they need further intervention or they can be dismissed from the program. So we're hoping to test that out at our Title I schools to see the impact that it'll have and then potentially look at implementation across the district if we see really good results. And then the last piece I have is tied to CKLA, but it's a little bigger scope. Our report card refresh for the fall is nearing completion with the change in new ELA program. And we had to change how our report cards look to match the new programming. So what parents will see in ELA and then in our specials for now is a shift from some of the edge jargon that was on the report card to ICAN statements. It'll be super clear on what kids can do because that's basically how it's written. I can write my first name, I can write my last name. So we're going to start, like I said, this fall with ELA and our special area classes with the intent of shifting the entire report card to ICAN statements for the fall of 2024. There's just not enough time in our schedule or was not enough. There was not enough time in our schedule over the summer to get that work all done. So everything's still standards-based. We'll just have a little bit different terminology in the fall, winter, and spring. And then leading into next year, every content area will have ICAN statements. So questions for us?
Mr. Murray, you mentioned the M-Class for the Title I schools. Can you speak to what the interventionists or I'm assuming like the reading consultants are doing to flag kids at our other elementaries as well?
Yeah, it's the exact same process. I mean, NWEA is a screener, right? And so that'll give you kind of the, I don't want to say categories, but like where our student achievement lies based on student performance on the screener. So we've got, you know, students who are above grade level, at grade level, some who need some strategic intervention and those who need intensive intervention. So M-Class is really targeted on supporting kids who need intensive intervention. Within our other buildings, we have our assessment remediation guides that come from Amplify that are tied directly to unit assessments. And so it's almost like an if-then manual. Teachers and our literacy specialists and parent support will look at the results of those tests and then basically follow the map on the interventions that can be provided. The beauty of M-Class is that it, a lot of that work is done by the computer, right? In terms of the plan being tailor-made for the student. And so it's a little more of a lift at some of our other buildings. But like I said, if it proves to be efficient and effective, then we'd look to make a switch across the board.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we putting the same emphasis on support in math? And I know that Amplify is ELA. Are we working towards the same sort of situation with our math?
Absolutely. So we do have math interventionists at each of our buildings, and they work hand-in-hand with our classroom teachers to provide math support. Our math coach, Mary Sue Nciso, has also trained, I think it's all of our K-2 staff, and we've got some 3, 4, 5 sprinkled in, in AVMR, which is Advanced Math Recovery. It's the best thing out there related to intervention. Really hits upon the foundational skills that kids need to build upon to be successful in math down the road. So yes, it's coming. It's just, you eat an elephant one bite at a time.
Thank you.
When are we expecting the results of the NWEA?
Testing finishes this week. So we'll be prepared, I think, next meeting to give a presentation.
Okay.
The meeting, the full meeting, not the workshop?
Correct.
In October.
The other question I have is, have we, do we have any data regarding how the ninth grade academy students feel regarding preparation for making a choice or decision on the academy when they get to the high school?
We have a lot of data on the high school data dashboard. I know they survey the outgoing seniors about what they are feeling. I'd have to double-check to see if we survey the ninth grade as well about their preparedness and what their, if they felt confident and competent in selecting the pathway that they did. I do know they give the senior exit survey, and that's pretty powerful data, too. But their data dashboard, Mr. Osbold keeps that up and follows the cohort. So maybe we'll have him come and present some of that to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another. If they choose a particular academy in ninth grade center, can they jump to another if they're not finding that it's aligning with their?
So they choose a pathway that puts them in an academy. We typically don't change academies for students, but there are multiple opportunities for them to double up in their pathways. If they really are struggling with their initial choice, that's a conversation with the counselor during 10th grade to see what their new kind of goals may be. The beauty of the eight classes a year is we have many kids that they stay in their original pathway, but then they double up and they almost have like a double major. Like there was a senior last year who was in business, so he completed those three classes. And then he also finished construction trades. Plus, he took baking and pastry. So, right? Why not? So if students aren't where they feel they need to be, that's a discussion that takes place. They have those small learning communities, SLCs weekly, and the counselor and the grade level teachers are in those meetings. So if somebody's struggling, they try to help them and address, you know, their needs.
Really individualized.
It is.
Even though we're, yeah.
Yeah. We try not to change the academy because there is the opportunity to, you know, kind of take what we call the global, you know, CTE pathways.
Very cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I don't, I don't remember if you were here then or not, but it was, it resonated again with me as I was just with a recent 2023 graduate over the weekend. And it's, when they presented here at a board meeting, we had some seniors do it. And one of the most powerful ones was the one who thought she wanted to do something, was in that academy, full in it, did it. Wasn't like she struggled in it, but she knew that wasn't what she was going to go on to college. So it's kind of nice to fully embrace something that you've thought maybe since you were nine, you wanted to be or explore and then discover it in high school when it doesn't cost any money.
Right, right.
So I think that is equally as important. So I would say they're not really encouraged to just up and change, like, oh, I don't want to be this anymore. Because the pathways are designed to give them, still the core curriculum, still give them what they need to be successful college and career. It's not meant to, you know.
It doesn't pigeonhole them forever for their life, right?
Yeah, their choice, so.
And I think the senior survey results show that, you know, like I think there were, you know, 30% were like, yeah, I knew, I went through the pathways, this isn't for me. So that's just as, it could have been higher than 30, but it was, it was a number that was, you know, not 10%, 15% that I figured out this isn't what I really want to do, which is good.
That's almost as valuable as finding out what you do want to do.
Yeah, sometimes more.
Yeah. Awesome.
They have so much more choices than we used to have.
They, there are many choices.
Figuring out what you want to do when you grow up for now is way different than when we had to grow up.
And some of them aren't even careers yet.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I will add a small caveat. I recently attended a statewide conference, and there was a vendor forum. And one of the vendor booths was some folks from Amplify. So we know, we've been talking about CKLA. Well, CKLA is actually one of the things provided by Amplify. And so one of the individuals sitting at the booth saw my name tag and said, you're from Romeo. Rob Murray, like it was all about Mr. Murray and how thorough our process has been, how efficient it's been, but yet thorough, and how excited they are for the work that we're doing in Romeo and how that could impact things maybe in other areas in southeast Michigan and beyond. So congratulations, Mr. Murray. Unsolicited praise from a couple of the consultants at the Amplify booth. It's hard to get Mr. Murray to blush, folks. I'm sorry, but we're just going to relish this moment for a minute right now. I do appreciate all the work that both Jennifer and Rob have done. And there's a lot going on out there with our teachers, and it's some heavy, heavy, deep work. But I can tell you that it's also matched with excitement. And so you just really appreciate those opportunities where you feel like you've got something right, and it's going to make a difference for kids, and I know we're going to see that. And I also heard that from the ladies at the booth is, I think you're really going to be pleased in a year or two. And one of the things that I would add that Rob has shared with me, hearing back from the teachers, I think maybe in the collaboration space, is the teachers that, teachers have blended classes this year, and in some cases, some members of their class were in a pilot classroom last year, and they can already see the difference that those students have. So it won't be anyone, you know, everyone will have been in a CKLA classroom next year. And so that's exciting. So I've got a couple of things, a couple of the things in my report. Want to talk a little bit about our annual theme? And we've included you in the team with your team uniform for this year tonight. So wear that proud. There have been several requests from the community for those shirts. And I said, well, those are team uniforms, so. We're going to hear a little bit from Mary Ann, and this is a little bit disjointed because Mary Ann's been with us. She's also on the personnel update tonight. But I'm going to allow her to talk about the good work that she's doing. And then we'll shake hands in conjunction with the personnel update. And then a little bit on school safety and enrollment. So just want to kind of, I know that, I think, a couple of board members were at opening day, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I really wanted to, but I won't. But I'm going to, I'm going to do the Cliff Notes version of it. So if you've been around here, you know that, you know, education is a very cyclical thing. And with that in mind, we have initiatives and things that go across many years. I think the academy's transformation would be a good example of that. But I also think because our work is so cyclical, I think we need kind of something each year to kind of, to create some focus for us overall in addition to strategic initiatives. So every year, at some point in between February and this year, late July, something resonates to serve as our annual theme. And we use opening day to present that to the bulk of our staff. But I also go around and have these new year meetings with all of our individual departments so that we spend that time with each staff. So our administrative team came back, all of us together in August, and we spent some time talking about these two questions. What brings you joy in your work and who brings joy to your workplace? And so when I posed these questions to our leadership team, I hadn't yet told them what this year's annual theme would be, but I was seeking to get some input from them. And specifically, you know, we're not going to go back and talk about the challenges of the last several years, but they're real. And in many cases, it blocked or was a barrier to the foundational joy that comes for people who work in public education. So last year saw us kind of move beyond that, and we brought a lot more fun back into school that was limited with, you know, whether it was assemblies or field trips or special events. But we also got back to full-scale, traditional daily routines with teaching and learning and that. So then there's inherently in any workplace, individuals who just exude joy. They are genuinely happy all the time, and they make other people happy. I, you know, I asked our administrators, who on your staff that every time you interact with them, you leave just feeling a little bit better about the work of yourself? And they shared some names, many names with that. So we then presented to them this year's annual theme, which is Choose Joy. And in short, what I shared with the staff is that this work that we do, whether in a support or actual formal teaching capacity, leadership or not, comes with some level of moral purpose. You are driven to work with children and sometimes a specific age over others, but some just generally with children. And so we get to do that every day, and we're grateful for that. I think it doubles down when we start talking about the ability to do that work here and do that work in this school district and in this community because that's special, and I'm biased. But I could give you a lot of examples why it is special. A few of our celebrations tonight represent what makes it special. 5,000 people don't come to every high school football stadium on a Friday night. And you see a level of camaraderie in what is a genuinely healthy rivalry, both before and after the game. So with that in mind, it was just this notion of, let's take this year when trials come, because they will, let's focus and choose joy and the joyful pathway. And if nothing else, it's just remembering that we're blessed and we should have gratitude for the ability to do the work we do, the ability to work with who we work with, and even more so to be able to do. even more so to be able to do it here. So there's some things that come with the annual theme every year. We have basically a monthly internal staff awards program. So we allow the colleagues, the colleagues, staff members to nominate one of their colleagues, and we typically tailor the essence of the staff awards each year to the notion of our annual theme. So this year, they are our joy awards. And then that also includes some individual recognition. So in between Rob and Jenner, Jennifer and myself, sometimes it defaults to a building leader, but we try and go out and visit that staff member. We have a certificate for them, and then typically a little gift that's a sticker or window cling or something like that. It is amazing how impactful that is to, to our staff, literally a significant percentage of tiers. And so I, that just warms my heart, but it also makes me think, are we that bad of affirming each other's work in public education that this certificate is going to create that response? But we'll continue to do that. And then we're actually ramping this up and creating a little bit more excitement around this year's awards. And finally, we, we have created a Choose Joy playlist, which now is going to have other iterations to it, because people who are my age find joy in songs that 10-year-olds would not find joy in. And that doesn't mean that they're inappropriate, they're very appropriate, they just don't find joy in them. So right now, we have a collection of songs out that, that some of our staff and buildings are using, and we'll continue to have some fun with that. So when we talk about kind of raising the bar a little, I, I spent some time at opening day playing some clips with something that brings me joy. And so I don't know how long it's been, but I'm going to say eight to 10 years, that there's been this notion of special celebrations added to college and professional sports. So most recently, of course, summer months and that, it's baseball, and you see all these nuanced celebrations when a player hits a homerun when they get back to the dugout. So this year, it was, for the Tigers, it was honoring the Red Wings, and that person would get a Red Wings helmet and a hockey stick, and they would go down the thing. And I just froze a few of these images for our staff, and I said, look at the smiles on these individual faces. So I had a little bit more fun with touchdown celebrations, because I'm a huge football fan, and I played a few of those. But we're actually kind of stealing a page out of some celebrations that started, because the defense doesn't ever get to, doesn't get to score touchdowns as often. But they get fumble recoveries and interceptions, and so years back, the University of Miami began this tradition of what we, what was called the turnover chain. And so when a guy recovered a fumble or intercepted, he came to the sideline, and they had this big gaudy fake chain that they would hang over his neck, and there was literally a couple of minutes of celebration, and then everybody moved on. So I needed some help to keep this going throughout the year, because Rob and Jennifer and myself alone would not be able to keep the energy going. And we know that we have a number of individuals in each building and department that exude joy. So we anointed some joy ambassadors. There are a couple people on this screen that are actually getting this recognition tomorrow morning, so don't congratulate anyone, because there's a few of them that will know by tomorrow's staff meeting, but don't yet. And there are many more, but, so I'm communicating with these folks throughout the year to just help create excitement around monthly award winners and that. And so what you see here was an initial collection of our joy ambassadors from opening day. And if you knew these people, you, I can see, because some of you know some of these people, and they just literally bring a smile to your face, because they are, they are the most positive people. And so around their necks are the joy chains. And so the reason why we couldn't anoint the whole group at opening day is because I didn't give Mike Savage, our robotics coach and teacher, enough time to 3D print enough of those joy emblems. But we went to work in early August, and I drove Antoinette nuts trying to find fake shiny chains, and then Mike just did what 3D printing people do and meshed them together. So you'll see some examples here. So monthly, we're going to allow colleagues the opportunity to pass the chain, and we, there's already a lot of fun going on with this. So, so that is our annual theme for this year, and we're going to continue to find new ways to just choose joy and celebrate the happiness and the gratitude that we have. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about communications and marketing. So I'm going to invite Mary Ann Brush to come to the podium, our communications and marketing supervisor. So can we just welcome her, please? And she's going to share some of the things that she's transitioned in the last couple of weeks, that she's launched and things that we'll be doing moving forward.
Good evening. Well, a lot of this has already been highlighted in the celebrations and the things that Jennifer and Rob spoke about and Dr. Robinson, but this is how we're communicating it to the broader community, to our families, to our staff members in some formal and less formal ways. So I thought it'd be fun to start with something kind of fun that kicked off two weeks ago, calling it Where For Wednesdays? It's a social media thing to increase engagement and just have fun and share some fun facts about our schools. Over the school year, on Wednesdays, there'll be a picture posted with the one you see up there. Well, actually, the first one was the second photo of the rocks, you see the Romeo rock, and we got a variety of guests. So it's posted on Facebook and Instagram, the district pages, and then people in the comments can say where they think this, wherefore art thou in Romeo is the idea, where in Romeo is this photo? And people can guess. And we had a range of guesses. Most people did guess it is Amanda Moore, it's their rock garden, their kindness rock garden that was started about a year ago by some parents. But there was a, across the board, some people thought it was Hevle, some people thought it was different schools, somebody, there was some guesses for Starkweather Arts Center, which they do, they too have a rock garden, I found out recently on a visit there. So anyway, so the, the top photo, that answer will be revealed next Wednesday, but it seems, I think it was a little easy, people seemed to know where it is. Have not had a wrong guess yet, but I won't give it away quite yet. So that's just a fun, fun thing that just kind of instituted recently. And then the first, Our Good News Update, which was a newsletter that you all should have received, that went out last week, and that'll be sort of a roughly weekly basis of highlighting one good thing or one, something going on in the district. And over time, it will highlight over all the schools, all levels, different, you know, different types of activities. And we featured Milo, the therapy dog, which you also heard about earlier this evening, and got some very positive feedback. I heard from Dana, the principal Hepner, that she got just an outpouring from people who, and even a grooming service offered free grooming for Milo. So that was, that was nice. So then the news is out about Milo. And a lot of people want other therapy dogs, so. And then, just speaking of social media, just be sure and follow all our district Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, there's sharing a lot of things going on. There's, I'm fairly impressed with how, how much the teachers and the principals put out on social media that can be shared from the district, but trying to create some other things. So just keep, keep an eye out for videos and fun stories and reels and all that. And then our Welcome Back newsletter will go out, it's in production right now, but it will go out this week, and it'll go out instantaneously because it's digital. So an electronic, and it will have highlights of things you've heard about this evening already, but to share with the broader community, such as the ninth grade commitment to graduate ceremony, the watchdog football, the watchdog game, watchdog week, and all the events around that. Highlights about the middle school transformation, where the status and where it's headed, and the new K5 Core Knowledge Language Arts or CKLA program. So look for all that this week. And looking ahead, I am going to be following the ninth grade journey, the academy journey, sort of experiencing it with them, because this is all new to me, and, and events like the Career Day on October 18th, I will attend and observe, and maybe even ride the bus with them to go on one of their college or university visits. I hope I talked to the principal about connecting with some of the student leaders to kind of get their perspective, to, you know, student voice and hear from them, what they're experiencing. And I'm really looking forward to the pathway reveal ceremony, that sounds very exciting. So stay tuned, and I'll be following all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
A couple of other things, just in the area of school safety. We'll, we'll dig into a few of these things a little bit more deeply and some other items at the committee meeting, but our two-way radio project, radios are distributed and we're using them. The transportation department has really experienced a significant upgrade, and you know that our handhelds interface with the new bus radios, so their internal use of it is, is really upgraded, and we feel like we have the coverage there with our bus radios. Our in-building, you know, distribution and that, we're, we're still kind of navigating that. Our principals are really connected to their old radios, so we're, we're figuring out a transition to, to kind of shift things over. But we've got some programming things we're going to shift, and the company's on board with us, you know, for a while here to make sure things are right. Our interior surveillance is now operational at all of our elementary schools, and a significant upgrade within the secured entries. So we're not dependent on the small, you know, talk voice camera that often shoots someone in the shoulder or gets kind of half, because we have two-way surveillance in the lobby that our, our clerical and security staff can actually see the entire lobby and identify that person, and if there was any concerns. So we, we, if you remember, we had, you know, the presentation last year based on our safety and risk assessments from Secured Education Consultants, so we're digging into those recommendations. A couple, these two other things are actually recommendations, so they knew that we had that, those projects underway, but it'll take us a little while to check the full list off, but we're making our way through it, and I look forward to keeping the board updated on how that's going. In terms of enrollment, you know, it's, it's really ironic, because there's typically a lot of conversation about enrollment in the first month of the school year, and there isn't a lot of conversation about it this year. So, so I'm pondering that, because if I've lived all these years of significant conversation, and there was times where there was declining enrollment, or neutral enrollment, or all this angst over what is enrollment, and this year, it seems to just be a little bit more calm confidence. So, so I don't have any numbers to reveal to you, because, but I'm sensing that we're going to have some good news coming once we get to count day. I've shared with the board that the first indication that something's different is the fact that we needed to order 200 more Chromebooks, because we didn't have enough student devices. Ultimately, it is best for us to wait for count day, which is on Wednesday, October 4th. And there's a series of things that have to happen after actual count day. But right now, all we really have is some sort of feeling on headcount, but we really need to go through the formal count day process. And I'm looking forward to do, giving you some actual numbers at our October regular meeting. And then the other thing I would tell you, based on what we've seen at both this building, the ninth grade academy, and the high school, I think when we get to January and that obligation we have to declare school of choice, yes or no, we're beginning to investigate what limited choice looks like, because we think we're going to have to put that in play for, for this building and the high school, because we're out of space. But we feel like if we have to do that, we'll still have the opportunity to probably take the equivalent of the students that we have been taking, and maybe a little bit more. But it will allow us to plan effectively for staffing and not be doing things at the, at the last minute. I think more importantly, it's going to get the word out, that if you're thinking about Romeo High School because of what they're doing with the academies, you might want to consider becoming a student before then, because you're not going to get in if you don't, and that's, that's okay, too. So more to come on that, but I'm sensing that we have to kind of step into limited choice when we think about the 24, 25 school year. And that's all I have.
All right. I did not receive any public comment on any topic that we are voting on, so I will move on. Can I have a motion for Employee Services Resolution 75, which is the personnel update? Moved by Dr. Demas, second, supported by Rice. Are there any questions? There's a sheet in your board packet. Seeing none, all in favor. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Mrs. Bonnick, can we pause?
You sure can.
Mary Ann, can you please come and get your six of seven handshakes?
Oh, yay.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Hi, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome to the district.
And Mrs. Bonnick, Mary Ann has asked if she could have the picture with you, because I've seen those. Mrs. McFarland, are you going to substitute as the photographer?
Yes, 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 yes. We look like we color court, yeah. People, we're so cute.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Employee Services Resolution 76, which is the second reading of the Fall Board Policy Update that we went through at our last meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Rice.
Support.
Support by Demas. Are there any questions on that packet? Concerns? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the Technology Resolution Number 77, which is the Chromebook Purchase.
Motion.
Moved by Antoine.
Support.
Support by Rice. Seeing none. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. I will abstain.
Okay.
I know I screwed you up, probably should have told you. Business Services Resolution 78, which is our annual financial audit. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Young, supported by Demas. Questions? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Facilities Resolution 79, which is our equipment purchase. This is the super duty truck, the snowplow, and the salt spitters.
Motion.
Moved by Antoine, supported by Ichorst. Any questions or concerns? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next one, Academic Services Resolution 80, which is our RVA. For those of you, that's our virtual academy course guidebook. Moved by Dr. Demas.
Second.
Support by Ichorst. Any questions or concerns? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. The next one is the long-awaited and amended agenda for the Employee Services Resolution 81, which is our AFSMI food service tentative agreement. Can I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Demas. I will support that. Any questions or concerns? For those of you in the audience, this is part of our spend-down plan. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Board discussion for the good of the district?
I had two questions.
Sure.
Pretending, or pertaining to the superintendent's report. One pertaining to, Mary Ann mentioned it, the middle school transformation, but if we could also look at covering more of our construction projects. Quite often, I get questions, what's happening at Croswell, or this portion of this elementary? It would be really cool to see some of that posted, the progress. And then as far as the two-wave, two-wave radio project, we had brief discussion last year pertaining to the software that we use for our bus drivers. Has there been a And then as far as the two-wave, two-wave radio project, we had brief discussion last year pertaining to the software that we use for our bus drivers. Has there been any follow-up about potentially bringing texting notifications to parents if buses are running late or weather conditions?
Yeah, the app is part of the new GPS system. So what we didn't get to do was a targeted pilot last spring, but we have the technology. We just have to launch it.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I did have a couple of highlights from Peach Fest I wanted to mention because our district is quite heavily involved, whether it's our students, faculty, or everyone else. So one of them I wanted to mention was the Peach Queen Ava, Romeo graduate, I want to say 2020. I thought it was really cool to have the position she did. These Peach Queens in the Peach Queen Court throughout the year worked very hard in our communities, whether Samaritan House, attending events, kind of being the face of Romeo. But Ava came up with a special drink. It was called the Peachy Queen with Main, Main Street. I know sometimes it gets butchered, their name, so I always try to say it correctly. Main Street. And a dollar of every drink that was sold throughout the weekend went towards the Romeo, Romeo Special Education Program. So really want to thank Ava for using her platform to benefit our students. The other one was Officer Bauer, our RSO officer. He was in the community quite a bit of course helping, but he was also present for Kids Fest and in the parades. So it was really nice seeing him out there for that.
With no air conditioning in his car, by the way. And it was rather warm, so.
Special kudos to that. And then the book sale that we have during Peach Fest. The AAUW puts it on, but our varsity girls swim team helped out with that. And the AAUW will donate or sponsor them as far as scholarships or programs like that. So huge thank you to that. And I know I didn't cover everybody, but to everyone in our district that was out, whether helping at the beer tent, at the grounds, I know some of our faculty will do that, or our band and robotics team being in the parade, it was really nice to see. And then the last piece I had was US News Report has their annual rankings for high schools. Romeo High School was ranked 145 in the state. However, I wanted to mention our International Academy that we send our students to that sometimes will approach the board to attend there. And we've always had great numbers with that, was ranked 11th nationally in the country. So that was huge. And, you know, I know this board, we're always very supportive to students that want to approach that academy. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to echo a little bit with the, the Peach Festival. I know some of our NHS students were also part of that, and THS supporting some of those different things. So I want to give a shout out to them because they don't always get recognized. But thank you, Dr. Robinson, for these T-shirts. I was part of, able to attend that welcome back, which was really great. If you were there, I love the theme. I think it was good to kind of have people sit down and really think about what does bring you joy, what is the motivation that happens intrinsically to do the work of education. I was half expecting the drum line to come out, too, since they are definitely part of the Friday nights that you highlighted. So hopefully, you know, different groups like that can be part of the celebrations throughout the year. But I've already heard it from my own kids, the teachers, and think that even the Choose Joy necklaces and the conversations around that, why are they wearing that? You know, what is that all about? It's already happening amongst the students. So that's great to see.
All right. I would like to echo all of that. I also was at opening day and, and it was fun and it, it did make me stop and think about joy. And one of the things that brings me joy, and it was not only being a board member, but also being in education for 30 years, is the fact that we are an educational unit. And it's even more important when we see us on the front page of the Macomb Daily, trying to create some narrative that doesn't really exist. And so I want to talk a little bit about our role as an educational unity and the fact that we do have property and the fact that there's this narrative that we're not being transparent. And so I know many of you are here tonight on that topic. And there has not been a vote on this property that has not taken place in public. There's not been anything that we have done that has not been part of the agenda. I had this reporter call me to say, well, the residents are calling because they think we're gonna sneak it in Monday night. Every step of the way, we have communicated with what we were told is your leader, which is Mr. Corey. So the moment we did not have votes in order to sell and enter into a contract at the last meeting, we contacted Mr. Corey. So I'm gonna tell you, from an educational standpoint, I, I feel we're being very transparent. The, the pickle that we're in and the, the part that's not bringing me joy is that in the same article, it says the residents want us to have a town hall meeting so that we can decide what will be at the, what will become of the property. But the flaw in that is, we don't control that. Your village does. And you guys know that. And so we, we put out an RFP that matches, mirrors what is allowed to be zoned in that property. That's transparency. We could have tried to just sell it and not care what was gonna be there, but we really thought 18, 19, 20 months ago, we were doing the right thing by putting out an RFP and, and working with the village and having them come along the way. Now, we can't control the fact that their government folks have changed positions and, and didn't participate. But unfortunately, we're taking the fall for that. And so I just want to say that that narrative is, is wrong. And we want to, we want, we, we don't want the property. We've made that very clear. It's not an asset for us that we're gonna maintain and, and keep. It's, it's not in our best interest. But I'd rather join you and go talk to the people that can change that. If and when this property does sell, it can only match what it zoned. If people want to sit and talk about a park, not one person here would ever tell you that a park would be a bad idea. But we don't control that zoning. It is zoned residential. So if we sell it as it is zoned, it can only be residential. So join us in, in pivoting and problem solving, but don't throw stones and, and say we're not being transparent and say we're hiding something or we're doing something secretive because we're not. We really aren't. We really entered into this with the best of intentions. And through the process, I think what makes me upset as an educational unit, that type of government happens in other places, but this board, we, we are gonna really stand for not being that way. Casting zones and, and making big grandstanding types of things, save that for another entity. As an educational unit, we model how we want our kids to learn. And one of the things in education about learning is listening. So we did listen. Therefore, we didn't enter into a contract. We have more work that we have to do. Okay? So continuing to, to create a narrative that doesn't exist. And I think the part where it finally stopped bringing me joy was when emails and people at the podium start to target our superintendent. Why? He's the leader of our educational unit. We work together. He doesn't lie to us. He doesn't not bring us information. There has never been that happening. And for someone to come up and say that as though we're seven individuals that are led by some sort of darkness and we didn't know what was going on is just wrong. And that's not the type of board we are. I promise you this, when and if action ever take is taken, if it's not Richard Cordage your leader, tell us who your leader is. We'll let you know. We put it on the agenda. We are allowed by law to go into closed session to talk about property. Because think about that, would it make sense to talk about the amount of money you're gonna potentially receive to let other people know? No, it wouldn't. So we do that work in closed session, but we always take our vote out here. We've never not done that. At least not in the 12 or 14 years that I've been on the board. And it won't be for the remaining time of my, my term here. I can tell you that because I work with these seven people. And that's not who we are and it's not what we're about. So let's work together. If, if zoning and those types of things have to happen, well, I'm, I'm happy to go to a village meeting. I want to also put the end to this road situation. We've known the road isn't ours. The developers knew the road wasn't ours. We could still build homes. And that road can still be the village's. That, that was never been a secret, no, no, nothing that you can dig up and, and cast at us. We've known that. That isn't anything that's gonna change the outcome of the property if, if it was sold the way it is. It's not. We're not taking action on it tonight. And when and if that time comes, if you want it to be something other than what it's zoned, you really need to go talking to another board. We're not the board that can change that. So that's my soapbox. But I do, do want people to know that we're, we're not doing anything behind the scenes. We never have and we won't. That's not what we're about. We're educators. We're here for education. We're here to model for kids. And what we know is when we know more, we learn more. When we learn, we listen. When we listen, we pivot. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. We're gonna think about a new way to come at this. But in the meantime, I'm happy to join anybody and, and go speak with the village. I think all of us are interested in that because we, we don't want to be set up to fail. And that's pretty much what we've been set up to do because we're just making it seem as though we have some control of, of something that we don't. So with that, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Mr. Antoine? Mr. Nope? All right. I will go to public comment. I have Dale Wells.
Thank you for the clarification of where we stand because it's really kind of a messy situation. My, my position is, as a property owners, owner in, in Romeo, I want to keep the highest and best use for real estate, getting the, the most money for the property that, that you can get for our education of children. I just felt really shocked at the way the property was marketed. There was no sign. From what I understand, it may not be true, is that a Realtor from Ann Arbor was, is representing this property? No, not true?
A real, I, I would use a consultant that does
There's no one getting commission on this property.
We use a consultant that is, specializes in property turnover of that nature.
Do they get a commission on a sale?
Well, just finish because you get your three minutes, so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Well, that's one, one question. The other is that I don't think any developers that this is, in this county, were approached directly. And I think that the consultant should be spreading the word that this property is available. I'm, I was shocked that I didn't get some sort of a notice as a property owner that this property was being sold. Maybe it's not necessary. I don't know all of those, those rules. Those are basically, I think, could have gotten this a lot smoother, where everybody would have known what was happening. One other thing is, is this going to not be sold at this present time, this RFP? Is that going to be terminated?
You can't terminate something that was not, like an RFP is a request or a proposal. So we still have those proposals. And that's the only way to answer that.
Okay. So if you go into closed session, that RFP could be approved?
Okay. First of all, our closed session tonight is on collective bargaining. It's not on the property.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Jane Lyons-Clark. I think that, yeah, I said her name right.
Hello. I'm not here to be combative or difficult or critical or anything. I just have some thoughts about the property and Romeo Community Schools' outsized footprint in the Village of Romeo, and it's about being good neighbors. We have Croswell School, Amande Moore School, and the administration building, and the bus garage that has greatly expanded. Ironically, buses are now exempt from weight restrict, sorry, weight restrictions, just as Romeo Village is finally having the streets paid, repaid. I just hope the schools can appreciate the Village of Romeo's contribution to the well-being and efficiency of RCS and its desire to keep the kids safe. The village contributes to the cost of the traffic lights at Chandler Sisson and West St. Clair and North Main Street in Hollister, also the traffic light at the current Romeo Middle School. And I think this is called being good, being, I can't read my writing, so anyway. The village paid to extend the sidewalk on the south side of West St. Clair to provide greater safety for the kiddos of Romeo to go to school at Romeo Middle School. As a veteran of the early morning traffic wars on West St. Clair, this is, is an essential and important service provided by the taxpayers in our community. This is called being a participatory neighbor. The resource officer at the middle school is also a police officer. I know that, and that's fine. He's considered to be a very important member of the staff. Again, the safety of the children is paramount. The village contributes 30% to the officers' salary and benefits, and Bruce Township does 10%, and the school 60%. The school is not in the village, but the village council believes in every opportunity to keep the children safe. This is called being a good neighbor. Lastly, I'd like to ask the school board to grant the, and now I don't know if you can do it. It was just that I thought you, well, no, I'm not, I'm talking, I want to grant the ability to designate the property as a park while you're trying to sell the property. I mean, maybe you could mow the lawn and, yeah, stuff like that. I'm, I'm not trying to get you to donate to the village because I would not, I know you would not do that and that is fine. So that would be called being an excellent neighbor. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Elizabeth Miller?
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking the time to hear, hear my thoughts. I want to first open by saying thank you to each and every one of you for hearing our concerns and responding accordingly since first hearing from us after our first community meeting on April 4th. Gus and Chris, your work on the committees to renovate our buildings and grounds as a result of the approved 2016 $80 million bond are much appreciated. Michael and Wayne, I don't know you as well, but I know you've been part of the board for years and I thank you for your service and dedication. Rachel and Catherine, thank you for traversing the volatile election process of 2022. Your tenacity and grace is apparent. Anita, thank you for being my mentor over 12 years ago when I was an incredibly green Romeo District Library Board Member. You shared your knowledge and expertise on running a public meeting smoothly and efficiently. You taught me well and I am forever indebted to you. Your over 10 years of service to our community, now I understand 12 or 14, is unprecedented. Thank you for what each of you have done to our community as volunteer elected board members. If I go a smidge over, please allow that since I just said thank you. After reflecting on the board's decision to have a special meeting to vote on the sale of the property, to clear view homes under resolution number 65, we have come up with an idea to create and distribute a collaborative mailer based on the Romeo Community Schools 2325 Strategic Plan, which is right here, and I've distributed copies of it tonight for those in the audience. The third bullet point is invested community advocates. We can be advocates. Based on the five pillars listed in the center of your 2325 Strategic Plan, we can help be with you, help you with your strategic plan with balance, respect, teamwork, and integrity. And we can even throw some fun in as well. Those are your five pillars. We would like to offer from our group the willingness to help create, finance, and distribute a collaborative mailer, asking the community, what, community what they would like to see done with the property, to hold a collaborative town hall meeting, to get the community at large involved in the future development of this property. As a sign of this commitment, we have donations and pledges exceeding over $1,500 to put towards this idea. In hand tonight, we have over $655 in cash and checks to show our desire to work with you. Who gets the credit matters not. Protecting this property from high-density development is still our goal. Getting the community's voice is imperative here. The fate of this property is in the hands of seven The fate of this property is in the hands of seven people, you, the elected school board, but the responsibility lies with all of us to take action while we still can. Please vote down Resolution Number 65 that's still outstanding, and it's still an open RFP out on the market. Replace it with a resolution to put a moratorium on the sale of the property for a specific time period until a plan can be put in place to work together. Let's work together so the district can get an agreeable price for the property, and the community is pleased and proud of the Romeo Community School Board's decision that will have a lasting impact for Romeo for generations to come. Help us come up with a way to purchase the property. We are Romeo, we are community, we are your community, your neighbors, your partners, your allies, and your constituents. We are Romeo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anita, that was good, you cleared, you cleared up a few things, so a lot of things I had to say, I can't say now. But the Macomb, I want everybody to know, the Macomb Daily called us, or called me, and after I spoke with the reporter, you know, I said, you got to get ahold of the superintendent and get ahold of you, so it's a fair article, and I think, I think it was fair.
She completely misquoted me, but go ahead.
So she, oh, when you said the, the property wasn't for sale?
Yeah. She asked if we were selling it on Monday, and I said no.
Oh. Well, I did get a lot of phone calls on that today.
Yeah.
But-
But start over, because you get three minutes.
No, I'm fine. But Anita and Todd, I got to tell you both, a lot of people have got ahold of me, and I've, I told this to Todd in, in private, that, you know, that because they thought you were being, not being transparent and that, and I have defended you, I've defended this whole board, and I've defended Todd, and I've defended you, Anita, that you're not on the take. I mean, this is ridiculous. And, you know, the day after that last meeting, you know, Mr. Robinson did call me, and, and he, he said that, you know, he felt like he was beat up pretty bad. And he could, he'll tell you, I stopped him, I said, stop, Todd, you're not a bad person, you, you're not evil, he said he was evil, but he's not evil, he, go ahead.
Members of the community.
Oh, members of the community thought you were evil. Well, so he's probably done more good decisions in a half a day than most people that complain about him doing a whole year. So, but just this one issue, you know, we had a disagreement on. So Anita, we're not, I'm not up here to grandstand or anything like that, believe me, I got better things to do than to come here. I just happen to be the guy that lives next door to it and wants less density. And we would, we would never set you up. Our, well, you can see what Elizabeth just said, you know, we, we want to help, that's what we're here for. You guys are volunteers, and it's, that's a tough job. Now that I come to these meetings, I can see you guys go to a lot of meetings, and it's quite a commitment, and you don't get paid. So, you know, I'm all with Elizabeth, you know, let's, let's work together and, and make that property the best it can be. And thanks, that's about all I got.
Thank you. All right. Nobody else? We will go, can I have a motion to go into closed session for the point of collective bargaining?
Motion.
Moved and supported. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Antoine is, yes, Ms. Bonnick?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Demus?
Yes.
Ms. Ikorst?
Yes.
Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Or, or Mr. Young, I'm sorry.
Yes.